Bugging me, my OCD.
Just don't look that way.
Alright. Which one?
That way, the nameplate certainly does. I didn't find it.
Their nameplates are correct. He's become the new Nema guy. You gonna apply? Back to his roots. Trying to fire me? We all thought that Herb was gonna retire. But the guy at Nema retired, so he took his place.
Everyone, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, six P M. Uh, we will start with the pledge of allegiance if you would stand and then remain standing for the invocation. We have Pastor William Johnson here from the Revival Tabernacle Church, twenty-two, twenty-six Jefferson Street.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the city leaders that are here today. And Lord, I pray that you give our city council guidance today as they work together to meet the needs of our community. We know that a lack of guidance causes a nation to fall, but victory is won through many advisors. And Lord, I ask you to guide them and help them to make sound decisions that produce effective results. I pray that you would direct their steps so that this meeting can be achieve, can achieve the, the best possible results concerning the needs of Bellevue. And I pray a special prayer for our firefighter, firefighters and our police force and our other emergency responders and of course, our military. We place you heavenly Father at the center of all that is done here today. These things I pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Johnson. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call? Please.
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A is approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to make a motion and then I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
And then I'd like to make an amendment and we move item fifteen A to go right after ten A.
Okay, we have a motion by Cook, second by Preister to amend the agenda to put fifteen A right after item ten. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Cook, second by Burns to approve the agenda and it'll be as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stinson, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. Seven A, presentation from now known as Grow Serp, from the Serp County Economic Development Corporation on second quarter, Andrew Rainbow.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, we, that's our, our big news is we recently changed our name uh, to, from Serp County Economic Development Corporation to Grow Serp. Uh, that, just quick background on that, we, we wanted to update our logo and, uh, last year and as we kind of got into that process with our committee, we decided, uh, that, uh, we, it was a good opportunity to also kind of change your name. Uh, it's one Serp County Economic Development Corporation is obviously a mouthful to say. Uh, it doesn't really fit on a, on a, a lot of marketing materials that, uh, very well. So, uh, but I also think it gives us an opportunity to, uh, to kind of uh, grow our, our, our efforts and then maybe, um, uh, do some other things beyond, uh, what we've been doing in the past is economic development changes to focus a lot on people and place, um, and not just, uh, chase of projects. I think, uh, uh, Grow Serp is a, is a great platform for us to, to build off of and then look forward to kind of co-marketing, uh, Grow Serp with the communities of Serp County. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll start, uh, on, uh, I did bring my, uh, I think it's in the presentation there, but my second quarter economic indicators report. Uh, and in a nutshell, uh, the first half, I'll, I'll kind of focus a little bit on the first half of the year, uh, was, uh, was a fantastic one all across the county, uh, especially from, uh, building permit, uh, valuation, which we use to kind of as a, as a proxy for capital investment. Uh, and Bellevue specifically, Bellevue had a, a, a decent second quarter, uh, was about the same, uh, a, a, a little bit more slightly than, than last year at this time. So, I probably can't read that on there, but, uh, we had thirty million and, uh, point, thirty point six million and, uh, billing permit valuations compared to thirty point five last year. The county as a whole had one point, uh, almost one point two billion uh, in, 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 in building permit valuations. And so for the year, uh, we're at almost two billion. Uh, and, uh, so that's six months. Our best year ever, uh, has been about one point five billion. So, uh, we have already blown past uh, uh, our, our greatest, our best year ever, which was twenty eighteen, I believe. And so, uh, that, a lot, obviously, uh, it's driven by very large projects, Amazon, uh, Facebook and Google, uh, which are all pulled, pulled really big permits this year. And so, uh, you take those out and we're still doing quite well. Uh, when you look at other, uh, indices, uh, moving down a little bit there, we, uh, looking, we've had three lots platted in the second quarter for business parks. We've seen a lot of interest, uh, from speculative developers who are, uh, to, uh, something we really haven't had in the past, where developers, both local and regional and, and now national are looking at our area uh, and taking a risk at, uh, plotting a lot, plotting lots, building buildings without having, uh, leases signed, which is something we've been working towards for quite some time. Uh, and actually now they're taking up a lot of, a lot of our, lots that we've been, uh, we've been promoting. So, uh, it will, takes us back to developing new, new sites across the county. Uh, on, on the housing side, uh, in the second quarter, we had four hundred and six, uh, lots platted across the county. Of course, Bellevue had, uh, the bulk of it there with two hundred and sixty-three. Uh, for the year on our platted lots, we are, uh, outpacing last year. We've got, uh, eight hundred and fifty-six, uh, through the half, through the first half compared with six hundred and nineteen. For the last couple of years, we've been plating about a thousand lots and permitting about a thousand houses across the county. So, um, we are ahead of schedule in, in that area too for the year. Moving down, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit, but, uh, just basically moving down the front page here of the, the presentation. Uh, so on the multi, uh, multifamily side in the second quarter, we had a big project come in from, uh, and filling with two hundred units. Uh, and so, uh, for the year, uh, that's all we've had. Uh, we're still ahead of last year. So, we've got two hundred, two hundred units last year, two hundred units through the first half of this year as well. Uh, and then, one of the, the other things that we hear from pretty much every employer that we speak to is, is the demand for labor. Uh, our labor force is, uh, recovering, uh, from, uh, last year where we saw a dramatic drop during the start of COVID. Uh, we're back to about, uh, almost ninety-eight thousand people in our, in our labor force. Uh, we've been close to that hundred thousand mark. I don't think we've ever eclipsed it. So hopefully we'll, uh, we'll continue to, to see that grow. Uh, but of course, our, uh, our, I'm, I'm sorry, we're at ninety, yeah, we're at almost ninety-seven thousand where we were a little bit above ninety-seven thousand last year. So, um, we should eclipse that here pretty soon and our employment, unemployment rate continues to be, um, really, really low. So, uh, it's always a good thing. I think, uh, two thousand is about as low as I've ever seen it. Uh, right now, we're at about twenty-four hundred. So we do still have some people that, uh, will work their way back into the, into the labor force, hopefully. Uh, I'll move on here to our report for Grow Serp. So far this year, we've landed, uh, four projects. Uh, two of them were in the second quarter, uh, and two in the first quarter. The, two in the first quarter, of course, we're, we're Googling Facebook announcements. Uh, and so those have, uh, uh, really high, uh, capital investment numbers. Uh, in the second quarter, we had two relatively smaller projects. We had, uh, Home Depot's opening or, uh, moving into a warehouse in Papillion. And, uh, we had another company that manufactures, uh, they're an international company that manufactures blades, uh, saw blades for the food production industry actually. Uh, and they're just opening a, a sales office here. Uh, and so, uh, that was five point one million in the second quarter. Uh, all in all, we're close to a billion dollars. But again, that was two very large projects. Uh, with that comes a hundred and thirty-five new jobs and, uh, we didn't have any retained jobs, all new to market there. Well, I guess that's on new, new announcements, I should say. Our project pipeline for the year, uh, remains, uh, strong as well. So far, we've had seventeen new to market, uh, uh, inquiries and those are, those are projects where we've submitted sites uh, to, uh, interested folks that had a defined, uh, project. Uh, we, we usually hit about three, thirty-two or mid thirties. So we're right on track for, uh, kind of a typical year. Uh, we have seen a lot of manufacturing requests. Uh, so last year, we saw a lot of, uh, food production and I think that was with the, the tumult in the, in the food, food production due to COVID. Uh, now we've seen some more that are kind of more healthcare related, pharmaceutical related. And I think again, uh, uh, the kind of the second response to COVID. First, people were scrambling to figure out how they're gonna make, uh, they're gonna produce what they needed. And now it's how we react and maybe capitalize off the opportunity that some people see out there for, um, so, uh, and other than that, uh, we have had four other projects. Uh, I think most of those are, are developers that were looking for sites to, to build, uh, build business parks on. Uh, and we've had two, uh, visits. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, one thing I did want to say is more, I, I didn't run the numbers and I should, I apologize, but, uh, I would say most of the sites that we've submitted so far this year have been in Bellevue. Uh, and so that's, we, we've really seen, uh, uh, we just don't have a whole lot of available sites across the county. And so I think there's a real opportunity here for Bellevue uh, to, to kind of capitalize on that. And so, uh, and I can, I can get that for you, but, uh, we've got some, uh, some specs buildings that are available, uh, but really a lack, a dramatic lack of, of buildable sites for folks that want to move into the area. And so, um, uh, I, I don't know what that means going forward, but, uh, I think, uh, we've got some pretty important infrastructure projects that, uh, that we need to get moving here so that we can open up new sites to meet that demand. With that, like I said, happy to answer any questions.
Andrew, is there any data on where the employees are coming from? Are they, have you heard back on, on that?
Where the employees are?
Yeah, where they're coming from, where they're drawn from.
We don't, but that is something that we, we are trying to find, uh, to find out. Um, I, what we do hear anecdotally from some of the employers is that they're trying to pull folks out of Omaha proper, I guess. But, uh, they're concerned, or, or I guess maybe what they think is happening is that there are people are, you know, driving past a whole bunch of other available jobs to get to, uh, jobs in Serp County. Uh, and so, um, that is something that I think we need to address, uh, from not just a housing perspective, but maybe working with some other communities to see uh, how we can all kind of grow together so that, I think, we need to, some folks kind of driving into Serp. We used to be, uh, I guess part of the, not so much Bellevue, but parts of, parts of Serp have been kind of bedroom communities feeding off it or feeding employers in Omaha. I think we need to get folks that are driving into, into Serp, uh, rather than driving out of Serp to work every day. But I don't have any hard, uh, hard data on that. Hopefully, um, there is a, there's opportunity, I think, with the census data being, uh, released now. There's a website that the census, uh, has called On The Map and you can kind of look and see where people are living and where they're working. And so I think that's something we can break down and try to figure out where there might be an opportunity there.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor. Andrew, just a quick comment. I love seeing the growth in Serp County. Uh, a lot of growth out on Highway fifty, Hundred and Forty-four Street and you named a couple of the businesses out there. What sort of surprises me is that I, I'm guessing, I don't know, that maybe there's some state incentives for some of those big developments out there that would probably be available throughout the whole state. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. I've had some discussion a little bit with, um, City Administrator Aristo and I know there's been some interest in down on Highway thirty-four, but I'm really surprised with us having the avenue of the LB eight forty and the monies that we have set aside that we haven't already seen, you know, someone select a site down there and want to move forward. Cause I think that's the incentives out on Hundred and Forty-four Street are probably the same incentives we could have down on Highway thirty-four. But the city has set some money aside through LB eight forty to try to help with some things happen down there. I'm surprised that we haven't seen anybody uh, move forward on a project.
I, I, well, one, you, you're correct. Yeah. Any incentive that other projects have, they could, they could also have here in Bellevue. Plus, Bellevue is the only community that actually has lo- local incentives available. So I'm a little surprised, I'm surprised too. I, one of the issues that we've had is the lead times on, on even some, some, uh, basically on kind of infrastructure installation. Uh, and so for, for the most part, a project comes in and they've got to build and pay for, or at least pioneer the fees for that, uh, for that infrastructure install. And if it's more than, you know, twelve months or, or, or longer, then we get cut because it doesn't fit their timeframe. So, one of the biggest things that we've seen in the last few years is the, the pressure on driving costs down is not as, is not a driving, man, it's always, it's always a factor, but the timing has really been the driving factor in, in site selection. So, uh, it's, I, I mean, I don't, don't want you to get rid of the incentives. I think, I think those are helpful. Uh, but it is, uh, having, uh, infrastructure that's accessible in a, in a, in a short amount of time is, is kind of what's been driving a lot of that decision making, I think.
And for me, I think of Interstate twenty-nine, Interstate eighty, good highway systems through Bellevue. I mean, you can get out of Bellevue any way you want. You can go by, you know, you can run down a railroad track, down the river or on the roads. And it just surprises me that we haven't hit a big project down there at this point. And I don't know what the attraction is out on Hundred and Forty-four Street. Uh, but I, I still think some of those businesses are competitors and I'm, I'm surprised that maybe we're not seeing something with the separation to say, yeah, we like this area, but we can just go down the road.
Yeah, well, I, I, and that's what, I do think there's a, there's a moment here for, for Bellevue as, um, there's been so much development out there that there's, there's really not any sites left of, of, available. And the lead time on those sites is, is much longer than, um, because we've got, they've got built a whole sewer system across the county to get there. Obviously, it's got to go through Bellevue to get there. Um, and so I think, uh, the, some of that pressure, uh, Bellevue can relieve some of that development pressure right now in the short term with some, uh, sites that are pretty available. And then also will probably be a little bit, my understanding is we'd be able to connect to some of that new infrastructure before it gets out there. So.
We're gonna connect first before we out there.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's what I mean. Yeah. So it's, like I said, it'll be here before it's there and the, the, there is still uh, a lot of pressure for, for more development. So my only, my, one of my concerns is, you know, if, um, is that if we don't have any sites, people will just le- you know, leave the area altogether and, and go to other communities. And so we've got to have something available for them. Uh, and I, like I said, I think Bellevue can, can, can kind of step in and, and really take advantage of that.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew, um, so of those companies that need that shorter lead time, are they leaving Serp County and going and building in Douglas County? Or are they just leaving the entire city and going someplace else?
Uh, I, well, so I, I wouldn't say there's a lot of folks that are leaving. Um, they're just getting really frustrated and not able to do anything. Uh, so like if you're in Omaha right now and you, and you want to grow, uh, uh, and you, you can't do it on your site and you're looking for other sites, you, you're probably looking out in Serp County and a lot of folks will, they'll follow the interstate system. So, and I would count Highway seventy-five as part of the inter- interstate system. Um, but, uh, you, you know, there could be any number of factors that's dr- that are driving their move. Um, but I think those folks might be sitting on the sideline. We, we've seen it before where they'll just kind of sit and, and wait and make do. Uh, but it's the new to market, uh, people that are looking at the Omaha, they come to look at the Omaha area. And they probably don't know that for Bellevue, they don't know what's north of Harrison Street and what's south of Harrison Street. They just see it as a, as an area. Uh, and so when we have available sites that are either in Bellevue or elsewhere, the, they're really hammering down on how fast can I start building and how fast can I get my, uh, my, uh, my operation up and running. And so.
And with regards to COVID, we saw a lot of, a lot of corporations causing people to work from home. So I'm just wondering, do you see a lot of commercial properties gonna be coming back on the market? Cause people can stay home to work. I mean, what are you seeing in your world?
Yeah, well, uh, what I do know is we're not seeing a lot of requests for office space right now. Um, so we're not seeing a, a, a lot of people um, looking for, to, to open up new offices. I, I don't know if I know I'm smart enough, probably brokers probably know more than I do specifically on what their customers, their clients are doing with their real estate. Um, but we're just, we're not seeing a bunch of office projects. And so I don't know if that means they're gonna stay empty or, or, or be repurposed or what, but it's, it's, it's the, the, I guess the energy of the market right now is more in the flex industrial, uh, area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Item seven B, proclamation designating the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Is there anybody in the audience that came specifically for this? Thinking we could have this on the consent agenda, but since it's on the agenda, I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. Uh, from the city of Bellevue, Office of the Mayor, this proclamation designating September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. As Constitution Week in Bellevue, Nebraska, whereas Constitution, United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty marks the two hundred thirty-fourth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated, designated September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Rusty Hyde, Mayor Bellevue, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. Takes us to item number nine, approved citizen communication. Nine A is Bellevue Chamber of Commerce branding campaign and associated cost to the city. And, uh, David Compton would like to speak, requested so. Um, if you come forward, state your name and sign in and your address.
Dave Compton, one one three West Twenty-second Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight zero zero five.
And we've had a practice of five minutes, uh, for publics, uh, hearings if that works.
I'm gonna try and get to this in five minutes. It might be a minute or two later, but I'll ask for permission if need to be.
Alright.
Um, I've been trying to get on the agenda actually for about four weeks right now. Um, on a issue that I know is gonna be coming in front of the council here before long. Um, has to do with a contract that was signed between the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for a branding campaign. And what I'd like to end up doing, that's why it might take this a little bit more than five minutes. Um, you guys all know what it says in the contract because you guys approved it. It's about seven paragraphs long. I'd like to read it for those that are watching it on TV or the general public that have not a clue what this contract is even about and maybe it'll make more sense to them. Um, this contract is dated for twenty twenty twenty. And it basically states this marketing amendment is between the city of Bellevue and the Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce collectively referred to as the parties. The parties wish to enter into agreement wherein the chamber through their separate master service agreement with OBI Creative will rebrand and market the city and work on developing, maintaining economic virtually to for the Bellevue community. City and the chamber understand that the city does not have a contractual relationship with OBI. This agreement does not create any contractual relationship between OBI and the city. Chamber has contracted with OBI to provide marketing service related to the overall marketing plans directed by the chamber. OBI and the chamber will develop and enter into one or more statements of work which will incorporate a description of specific services to be provided. The goal of the services is to rebrand and market the city of Bellevue and work developing and maintaining economic virtually for the Bellevue community. The chamber by working with OBI will provide these services to the city. In exchange for services, the city agrees to pay the chamber a one-time payment of one hundred thousand dollars under this agreement. Payment to the chamber shall be due and owing upon receiving an invoice from the chamber for said funds shall be payable to the chamber within fifteen days after receipt of the invoice. The chamber, the compensation as outlined above. This payment shall be a one-time payment for the fiscal year twenty twenty, regardless of any fees incurred by the chamber to OBI. The agreement will be automatically expired on September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And the additional requests for funding will have to be approved by the Bellevue City Council by separate agreement. The text hereon shall constitute entire agreement between the parties. This agreement may not be changed orally, but only by agreement and writing signed by the party against whom the enforcement of any waiver, change, modification, extension or discharge is sought. This agreement shall become effective commencing upon the date the agreement is signed and executed by all parties. If any provisions or any portion therefore contained in this agreement is held unconstitutional invalid or unforceable, the remainder of the agreement or portion therefore shall be deemed severable, shall not be affected and shall remain in the full force and effect. The agreement is made pursuant to and shall be governed, construed and enforced in all respects and for all purposes in accordance with the laws of the state of Nebraska. The chamber shall retain possession of any and all invoices it received for services from OBI for a period of ten years. If requested, the city to review said invoices, the chamber shall make the invoices available for inspection request. So that, that is a contract actually that was put out there and what ended up taking place is the city of Bellevue gave the Chamber of Commerce a hundred thousand dollars as per this agreement. And this agreement actually expired in September of twenty twenty of last year. Um, after it expired, there was a bill brought to the city of Bellevue, an additional bill for, that I've got actually in my possession and handed actually to the city of Bellevue for an additional eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to the city of Bellevue for them to pay. I guess the problem I have with that is why would you take and not come back in front of the council? Cause if I was a council person, I would have questions on that. I'm not saying you wouldn't approve it, but I would have questions on what did I get for my first hundred thousand dollars would be one of them. Um, where do we stand at with this? But this bill was actually dated December, invoice date, December first of twenty twenty. It was not handed to the city of Bellevue until the end of May 1st of June of 2021. I think it's very, very irresponsible for somebody to spend an extra eighty some thousand dollars and then walk into the city of Bellevue instead of coming to the city of Bellevue. And this money was spent. I mean, nobody, this contract's pretty cut and right. It's got the dates on there, when it expires, how much we're giving you. That's taxpayer money. How can you, how can you pay another eighty one thousand some dollars of taxpayer money when you as a city of Bellevue aren't obligated? I think to me it shows somewhat of a lack of leadership. I'm not sure how somebody can go spend that much money above and beyond their contract. I know as contractors in Bellevue and stuff like that, if you guys give us a contract for $100,000, we came back and with another $50,000 bill, you guys are gonna laugh at me and tell me to get out of here, or whoever it may be, unless we had came to you for a change order, whatever, and that's exactly what this requires.
Just letting you know your five minutes is up. Feel free to wrap it up.
Thank you. I'm good.
All right. Thanks. Okay. Item 10 we will move to, and that is liquor licenses, 10A. Recommend approval of the application for Brian J. Mivis as the new manager for Dillon Companies LLC, doing business as Baker's Supermarkets Store 300, located at 3614 Twin Creek Drive and Store 318, located at 801 Galvin Road South. And I will open up our public hearing for that liquor license. If there's anyone here for or against, please come forward. Just a question, is the applicant in the audience? Does not look like it. Anyone here to speak for or against the liquor license application? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing and I'll take a motion. Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion that we recommend approval to the Liquor Commission for the application for Brian J. Myers as the new manager of Dillon Companies LLC, doing business as Baker Supermarkets Stores 300, located at 3614 Twin Creek Drive and Store 318, located at 801 Galvin Road South.
Second. Motion by Stenson, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And as the amended agenda goes, we'll move to 15A, resolution. Resolution number 2021-26, approval of the redevelopment plan for Lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign. Do we have a motion for that? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number 2021-26.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Back on item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, 11A. Ordinance number 4046 and ordinance, a request to rezone Lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition from BG to RG 20PS. Applicant is Freedom Village LLC, general location, 1811 Hillcrest Drive. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4046, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 1811 Hillcrest Drive, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 4046 as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
All voting for, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11A1, request for site plan approval for Lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition. Do we have a motion for that? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item 11A1.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing, Mr. Arnie. Item 11B, ordinance number 4047, an ordinance to request the rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Herald Square, replat 1, being a replat of Lot 49, Herald Square, from RG 50 to RG 20 and RG 50, for the purpose of a single-family residence and care facility for disabled adult. Applicant Sharon Chudhuri. General location, 8700 South 25th Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number 4047, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 8700 South 25th Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And I'm going to recuse myself and turn it over to Council President Cook. For potential conflict.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, the time is, is 6:36. Uh, I'll take a motion on ordinance 4047. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 4047.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember McCaul. Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to say this is, this is still a great idea. I've been thinking about this since you guys came to present this to us, and I think it's a huge need and a great honor to your daughter. So I'm happy to say that we're part of this.
Any other comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting for, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11B1, request to small subdivision, plot lots 1 and 2, Herald Square, replat 1. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that we approve item 11B1.
Second.
Thank you. I got a motion by Councilmember Welch, second by Councilmember McCaul. Is there any questions, discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting for, motion carries.
Thank you. It's 11, or I'm sorry, 6:37. Mayor has returned to the chamber.
Thank you, Councilman. Item 11C, ordinance number 4048, to amend Article 1, Chapter 28 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending 28-7 and adding a new section, 28-15, regarding the declaration of nuisance and abatement procedure for unlawful storage of building materials on streets and sidewalks. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4048, an ordinance to amend Article 1, Chapter 28 of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending Section 28-7 and adding a new section, 28-15, regarding the declaration of nuisance and abatement procedure for unlawful storage of building materials on streets and sidewalks and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve 11C? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 4048.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Stenson. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
I'm out of order, but I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you very much for your vote.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCaul is yours going through. Yep, there it goes. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11D, ordinance number 4049, an ordinance to adopt the annual appropriations bill. 11D1, resolution number 2021-28, a resolution to set the 2021-2022 property tax request. And I will open up the public hearing for item 11D, ordinance number 4049. If there's anyone here wishing to speak. Public hearing is still open for ordinance, ordinance number 4049. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for ordinance number 4049.
I think our finance director has something to say.
Yeah, there were just a couple of small adjustments that need to amend the resolution tax amounts. And I'd just like them to, whoever makes a motion, to include the total of the appropriation. When they get to the budget.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution? The resolution. Can you make a motion to approve? Yeah. Yep. Go to Councilman Preister.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And procedurally, I'm told that even though on the agenda, it's 11D, 11D1 needs to go first, and that's where the amendment is. So I will make the motion to approve 11D1. And then following that, I will make an amendment to that motion to put in accurate dollar amounts. So I would need a second on my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And then I will move to amend in resolution number 2021-28, the 2021-2022 property tax request be set at portion. And then the bond fund portion and the total property tax request. And it would be amended to general fund, $20,297,761 and no pennies. Then the bond fund will be amended to read $7,578,857 and no pennies. And that will be a total property tax request of $27,876,618 and no cents. That's the amendment. And I would just make sure that our finance director concurs with that amendment.
Do you need a second on that? I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Preister, second by Welch, to amend, as Councilman Preister just read and confirmed by Rich Severson that it is correct. Any questions or comments on that? Councilman Cook?
Rich, our mill levy stays the same.
At 61 cents.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask this question, but I've had people that have approached me that we recently annexed. And some of them said that their taxes went up, their property taxes went up. Some of them said that their property taxes went down. Even though we've kept our mill levy at the same, you want to share with them?
Sure. Your property values throughout Sarpy County have, um, have risen. And they, that's been kind of a trend over the last five years anyway. So what you're actually seeing is those property values rising and which in turn is going to make your taxes go up. The city's mill levy is still staying the same. Now, the argument, I guess the question would be, does the city reduce their mill levy to cover that difference? That's always a possibility, but the city has, uh, there's also inflated item, inflation goes on in your city products too. So, um, can the city, uh, reduce their mill levy? Certainly we could, but we'd have to cut some services or cut back on some projects that we, that we have planned or maybe we're behind on. So, um, city of Bellevue is in pretty good shape. We do have a lot of projects that are, are, let's say backlog with COVID and not having money in past years that, uh, we, we are really trying to catch up on. So the answer is, yes, your taxes are going up. It's based on your assessed valuations of predominantly.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, motion by Preister, second by Welch on the amendment as well. Is that correct? Okay, uh, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Preister, second by Welch, to approve resolution number 2021-28. And that would be as just amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 11D2, approve an additional 1% in the base of restricted funds. Take a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item 11D2.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11D3, approve ordinance number 4049 and adopt the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4049, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 4049.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a quick comment. I want to first of all, thank the Budget Task Force, which is Councilmember Welch, Councilmember Burns, and myself are on that. But I think what is more important is the leadership we got with the city. We get a lot of direction from the mayor, Mayor Hyde, on some of the things that he wants to see moved forward and things that are being done. Jim Risto is at all these meetings, answers questions along with staff of, of, um, Rich Severson and Marcy Horton are at these meetings, along with Chief Guido, Chief Clary, and, and Mr. Clark of Public Works. I think the process that we have works very well as far as putting a package together and bringing it towards the city. But I want people to understand. But I want people to understand is that it's our leadership of the city that is putting us in a direction that I think that we're moving very forward in a very positive way. And, and I think, uh, I've had a lot of positive things from people that I talked to about some of the things that the city has done recently. And, uh, it's been good stuff, so I'm happy with where we're at, and I think financially we're set pretty good. So Rich and Marcy, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Cook.
I might just add to that, just, uh, Rich gave a good pie chart last, um, at last week's public hearing on the budget and a two hundred thousand dollar home in Bellevue, um, the taxes would be four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, so just to put it in perspective, the schools get two hundred and twenty-two dollars, well, they get two thousand six hundred and seventy-five oh nine in a year, so that's two hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents a month you're paying for schools. The city gets one thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, which is a hundred and one dollars and seventy-seven cents, so you're getting public safety, um, uh, fire, streets, snow removal, parks, libraries, pools, all that stuff for a hundred and one dollars a month, which is, you know, it's probably less than a lot of people sell bills. Um, so there's a lot of service there. And then also Sarpy gets, uh, five ninety-three a year, forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents a month. And the NRD gets seventy-two dollars and ninety cents a year, which is six dollars and eight cents, so that's, that's kind of how that breaks down, puts it into perspective. But again, thank you, uh, Councilman Cook.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I would concur with both comments and just add to it a little bit of a civics lesson. Any elected body has three main responsibilities. And one of the primary ones is to pass a balanced budget. And so this is one of a council elected body's primary responsibilities, along with approving all individual spending. And the second one is to pass all policy, all ordinance. And the third one is to be responsive to constituent concerns and be an intermediary between the citizen and their elected government. So I think we have done that. I would agree with Councilman Cook. This body has worked well together collaboratively, and we have been moving the city forward, I think, in a good direction. And I want to thank our finance department for monitoring that, our legal department for checking where we could get COVID funds and finances, and making sure we bring in all the revenue we can. And then thank the citizens, because even during COVID, by the full community working together, we did much better than we anticipated financially and continuing to move forward despite a pandemic. So we have been blessed, and I am personally very grateful and thank all for that blessing.
Thank you, Councilman Preister. And it, it starts, to me, it starts at the bottom. We've got great employees that help us, help us get there, so. All right, item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Oops, nope, we didn't, did we? Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to approve ordinance number four zero four nine. If there's no further questions, then please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Item twelve A, ordinance number four zero five zero, and ordinance to amend section twelve dash fifty-seven through twelve dash fifty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty fifty, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash fifty-seven through twelve dash fifty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks, to repeal all previous versions of the same, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Okay, and I will open up the ordinance number four zero five zero for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Ordinance number four zero five zero. For or against, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading thirteen A, ordinance number four zero five one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Public Safety Department Tax Antis- Anticipation Refunding Bonds, series two thousand twenty-one, in the principal amount not to exceed three million, five hundred thousand dollars. And I've also had a request from finance to waive the rule requiring three readings, so if there's someone here that would want to make a motion to waive the readings. Susan, would you read that ordinance first, please?
Ordinance number four zero five one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Public Safety Department Tax Anticipation Refunding Bonds, series twenty twenty-one of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed three million, five hundred thousand dollars, to provide for the payment and redemption of certain Public Safety Department Tax Anticipation Bonds of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued and authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay the interest on and principal of such bonds, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet or electronic form and related matters.
Thank you. And then Councilman Preister, did you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion then to, in the public interest, request to waive the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting on ordinance number four oh five one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions on the waiver? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now I will open up ordinance number four zero five one for public hearing. So is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero five one? Please come forward. Please come forward if you want to speak regarding ordinance number four zero five one. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And we can vote if we have a motion. Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero five one.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Cook. Any discussion? Councilman Preister?
Just for the public's information, in the public interest, we want to do this quickly while we still have low interest rates. We are refinancing bonds and saving taxpayer money, so it's certainly in keeping with the budget we just passed. And again, credit to the administration, finance director, and the people that he works with and staff that we monitor these bonds, and we bring them up when we can save money. So it's good management, it's good financing, it's fitting and in keeping with the budget we just passed, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Motion by Stenson, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero five two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series in the aggregate stated principal amount of not to exceed one million, five hundred thousand dollars. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Maybe here. Ordinance number four zero five two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of de- general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska on one or more series in aggregate stated principal amount not to exceed one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of, A, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand outstanding principal amount of various purpose bonds, series two thousand thirteen, dated March fifth, twenty thirteen, B, one million, four hundred and seventy thousand outstanding principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, series two thirteen, dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, prescribing the form of such bonds to be issued and au- authorizing officers of the city to approve certain final terms of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxed to pay the same, if necessary, providing for the sale of the bonds, authori- authorizing the delivery of the bonds to be, to the purchaser, and providing for the disposition of proceeds and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet or electronic form.
Thank you. And for the same reason, uh, for the public's interest of saving money, um, the finance director is asked to waive the three readings and hold a public hearing and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting as well, so. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to waive the rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing, and vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
Just a second here. It's not liking something. Let's just take it by roll call. Stenson?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I will open up ordinance number four zero five two for public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience, please come forward that would like to speak regarding ordinance number four zero five two. Anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve ordinance number four zero five two, as Susan so eloquently read. Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero five three, request to amend sections five point two seven, ML light manufacturing, and five point two eight, MH heavy manufacturing, City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding the addition of recycling collection and processing facilities as a permitted use. Applicants Waste Connection of Nebraska Inc. and City of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number forty fifty-three, an ordinance to amend sections five point two seven and five point two eight of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to permitted use in the ML light manufacturing and MH heavy manufacturing zoning districts to repeal such as sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four zero five four, request to rezone lots twelve B and thirteen C south of Drainage Ditch Butterfield subdivision located in the northeast quarter of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirteen east, Sarpy County, Nebraska, tax lot fourteen, except that part taken for highway right-of-way and part of vacated state right-of-way in the east half of the east half. In the southeast quarter adjacent to tax lot fourteen, all located in the southeast quarter of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirteen east, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and part of vacated state right-of-way in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, west of Fort Crook Road South, located in the southwest quarter of section eleven, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from FX and BNH to ML for the purpose of light industrial development, applicant Waste Connections of Nebraska, Inc., general location Fairview Road and Fort Crook Road South. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road South and Fairview Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Here at the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number four zero five five, request to amend sections two dot two two definitions, five dot two seven, ML light manufacturing district, five dot two eight, MH heavy manufacturing district, five dot three five, HCO Highway thirty-four corridor overlay district, and Article eight supplemental regulations. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding solar energy, applicant City of Bellevue, case number one six five. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five five, an ordinance to amend sections two point two two, five point two seven, five point two eight, and five point three five, and Article eight of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to definitions, permitted uses in the ML light manufacturing, MH heavy manufacturing, and the HCO Highway thirty-four corridor ov- overlay zoning districts, and supplemental regulations regarding solar energy to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to prove, provide for an effective date of this ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Here at the council chambers. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention that when this was first brought up, I had some concerns about it being onerous, particularly to any residential. I just want to compliment staff and the planning department. They've done a very good job in protecting a- both the city as well as the residential owner. And I think it's very balanced and very good. I may have some suggestions or possible amendments to improve it even further for the next meeting. But compliments, I think it was done well.
Thank you. Item thirteen F, ordinance number four zero five six, request to rezone lots one and two, Whispering Timber Estates replat seven, being a replat of lot one oh six, Whispering Timber Estates Lot One, Whispering Timber Estates replat six, and lot two A one, Fair Hill Edition, from AGRE and RS eighty-four PS to RE and RS eighty-four PS for the purpose of existing residential development and small subdivision platelots one and two, Whispering Timber Estates replat seven. Applicants Todd Centoro and Greg Dennis, general location Hickory Circle and Child's Road East. Susan, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Hickory Circle and Child's Road East, more particularly described in section one of this ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item thirteen G, ordinance number four zero five seven, a compensation ordinance reflecting pay ranges covered under collective bargaining agreements and unclassified positions. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero five seven, an ordinance of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for the publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number forty thirty-eight, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances we have done this evening. Fifteen B, resolution number two zero two one dash three one, a resolution approving and authorizing the merit of sign- 15B, Resolution Number 2021-31, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the municipal annual certification of program compliance for 2021. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2021-31.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments, discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16 is current business. 16B, recommend approval of purchase to replace two end-of-life servers with three host systems and a flash storage system. Comes with a five-year service and maintenance agreement from Dell Technologies in an amount not to exceed $130,323.31. Need a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item 16B, as just read.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Discussion or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16C, recommend approval of the lease agreement with Dillon Brothers Harley-Davidson Inc. for six police motorcycles in an amount not to exceed $20,160. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve 16C.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Preister. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Lockton's Employee Wellness Program Agreement for fiscal year 2021 in an amount not to exceed $21,780. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any discussion or questions? Please vote.
There it is. Thank you. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16E, recommend approval of the Travelers Chubb MWECC renewal proposal for the city's fiscal year 2122, property casualty insurances in an amount not to exceed, I guess, $621,49. Need a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16E.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Let's try that for the third time. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment extending the 2019 CDBG subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity for Sarpy County for the 2020 Land Purchase Project in an amount not to exceed $22,000. Looking for a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve 16F.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number 2 to the original with DIY Holding Company, LLC, increasing the contract for the 2021 Concrete Pavement Rehab Project in an amount not to exceed $103,301, increased to be paid from current cemetery budget. Need a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve 16G.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Number 1 to the original agreement with RJN Group, Inc., increasing the agreement for the Whitted Creek Sanitary Basin Modeling Project in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Take a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16H.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Discussion? Please vote.
Did it again, didn't it? All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Civilian Employees Association of Bellevue Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2025. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion, we approve 16I.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or discussion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just note these are four-year contracts, which I think is good, saves the city some time, it's being efficient. I do appreciate having the insertion on emergency declaration situations, so I think that's good. It's in all of these contracts, and I think it was very creative, and I appreciate the way we've added a federal highway, or federal holiday, and at the same time, we're not increasing. So it's looking out for the taxpayer, but we're keeping the same number of actual holidays in all three. So a little creativity there with everybody agreeing, it's nice to see, so. And I understand the negotiations were very amenable, so I thank all of our city employees' unions, and I thank the administration for how it was all handled. It was one of the smoothest ones that I have seen in my tenure on the council, and I want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Thank you for the break and talking. We have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote. Thank you. 16J, approve and, approve and approve the mayor, what do I want to say there? Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Bellevue Professional Management Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2025. Take a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item 16J, as you just read it.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 16K, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Bellevue Police Command Staff Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2025. And I'll take a motion for that. Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve 16K.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16L, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Bellevue Police Officer Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2025. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve 16L, as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stenson. Any discussion, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 17, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports, and they are in your packet. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, we'll put those in the record. No closed session, so I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.